Good evening. It is now seven o'clock, so I will call this meeting of the Prosper Independent School District to order. As always, this meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, which can be found in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. All of our voting must be in public, but we can privately discuss certain items, including but not limited to matters regarding individual employees, individual students, land acquisitions and real estate, school safety and security, and matters requiring legal advice. However, after that private discussion, any final vote must be in complete view of the public. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the agenda for tonight's meeting was posted for the public to view at least seventy-two hours before the meeting. And with that, I will, we have a full quorum this evening. Mr. Bridges, Mr. Dial, Ms. Dixon, myself, Mr. Beavers, Mr. Cavender, Mr. Linker, and Mr. Van Wolf are here. And with that, Mr. Bridges, would you please pray for us?
Absolutely. Father in heaven, we thank you for the opportunity to gather. Thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this district. Father, we thank you for the blessings that you've showered on this district over the years. And Lord, we ask that your continued hand would be upon the children, the staff, the administrators, everybody that's involved in serving the kids of this district, Father, that you would give safety, that you would provide a safe environment, that you would provide a great avenues for learning and growth and enrichment. And Father, that this year would be characterized by great peace and joy and learning and Prosper ISD. Father, as we contemplate the items before us, I pray you would give us wisdom and discernment as we talk about the things that are before us, and Father, that you would guide us in our discussion. We thank you for all you've done for us. We thank you for this opportunity that we have to be part of this district and be part of this team and part of the people that serve our community. I pray this in your son's name. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Cavender, would you please read the board vision for us?
The board's vision is to ensure a safe and supportive educational environment that promotes academic excellence and opportunities, honors tradition, fosters student learning, facilitates effective recruitment and retention of talented educators, and grows all people at all levels.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. We will now go into, well, we've got some dates up here on the screen for everybody to make note of. We've got, hey, a holiday coming up here pretty soon, so everybody look forward to that. We will now go into, we have one person that has signed up for public comment this evening. Need to read a little language here. First, the next item on the agenda is public comment. We want to thank everyone who speaks during these times of public comment. We love working with you to help maintain transparency, create trust, and continue the partnership between our staff and our families and community. Please note that reaching out to the board members directly to discuss your thoughts or concerns is the most effective way to partner with us in our shared goal of helping children succeed. However, we will continue to honor your right to speak at these meetings, even though we cannot respond to you. All public comments should be limited to the school district governance and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student, you may utilize the district's grievance procedure provided in Board Policies FNG, DGBA, or GF. Please note that the board will not respond to comments or questions raised during the public comment. Based on the number of individuals tonight, we have signed up to comment. We will give three minutes for the speaker. When each speaker gets to the podium, we will ask that you please tell us your name and whether or not you live in Prosper ISD boundaries. This evening, as we, this is a special meeting, and we only have one agenda item. All topics will be on the agenda items specifically. So with that said, Ms. Bukowski? Okay. She's not here this evening. Okay. Moving right along then into, let's see here. This is the, Dr. Ferguson, you have a presentation for us on the long-range planning committees.
Yes, if you will remember, July, we had a meeting, and the long-range planning committee presented options to you as a board. Obviously, we've had discussions, and you all have been able to review their recommendations to see what it is that we need to do as we start creating this future framework for our students, our staff, our parents, and our community. And so tonight, we're going to go back through some of those same things. So here's a short video about that long-range planning.
Long-range planning committee, in this case, a bond planning committee, really comes together to look at the growth of a school district and a community within the context of that community. Prosper ISD is very unique. I've never been in a community where there is as much growth as is happening and is projected to happen and at the rate that it's happening. So anytime you pull a committee together, it's obviously got some staff on it, but the key component of a bond planning committee is the parents and the community members.
The way we were really given information was a very step-by-step process. I felt like everything was really well presented, everything from how the district started out to where we're going and everything in between.
We've been given a lot of information. We've been given a lot of statistics of the number of students that we have currently, the number of students we're expected per the demographers. But I do feel like we got a lot of information to help us make a decision to say, these are the costs that we've experienced to this point, these are the costs that we're expecting in the future, and hope that we can get the, you know, facilities that we need to support the exploding number of students that we have.
As Prosper has grown, the district has done its very best just to stay ahead of that growth. And this bond planning committee has done a great job of looking at what needs to happen.
Our end goal really in all of this is to make sure that every student in Prosper ISD has the same opportunities.
One of the things that I learned from this committee process is how many of our buildings are ten to fifteen years old. And so even though we're building new buildings all the time, those buildings that look just like the brand-new buildings, the same footprint and everything, are already showing some age, and there already is some work that needs to be done.
We are creating a world-class environment as much as we can for this district because it does have so much to offer. I don't want to say it was easy to come to a consensus, but it was very informative. I think the biggest part of it was soaking up all of the different pieces of information, everyone individually making a decision that they thought was right, and then ultimately deferring to the group.
There are lots of things that need to happen in Prosper, not just one, not just two. It's multiple elementary schools, it's multiple middle schools, it's other facilities, it's multiple high schools. And so putting all that together takes some time, and it takes people who understand the rate of growth that is happening in Prosper.
So that gives everybody a nice overview of the experience, multiple meetings with about fifty different staff members, really staff, parents, community members, really looking at all of the different options. One thing that I truly appreciate, and those on the board that were on the long-range planning, when we first went into those meetings, it was, hey, let's go ahead and get a number out there for build-out. And that was a $4.2 billion price tag. And so really being able to kind of throw all of that out to the group to go, how do you react to this? What do you think about this? What do you feel like the community will react to us? I feel like that this committee did an excellent job of really trying to hone in on what are the needs in this district, take care of our students, our staff, our parents, the reason people have moved their children here for opportunities. But also, we're very mindful about the expense and the price tag that could potentially be sitting on this if we went to build-out. And that was, that's at 50,000 kids. We're just a tick under 28,000 kids. So we're a little over halfway through this growth. So for them to really forecast and envision way, way out into the future, but then to think about where we are right now, it's real easy for our community, and those of you who are on the committee saw this, they got really jazzed and really excited because they were getting all of this in-depth information. And so we had to really kind of take that excitement and go, we're excited about this too, but what's a good reality for what we're trying to go after, and what would be a good recommendation to bring to you all as the board that you could wrap your mind around, knowing all that you know about finances, bond funds, all of the things that you make big decisions on. So our goal is to make sure that we were informing, really involving as many people as we can, and that this was not just a sole decision by just a handful of people, that this was truly a representation of what would happen across this district in all areas, making up the 58 square miles that we serve. So these are the people, or the individuals, who are our brave leaders who came to say and give input and share their thoughts. It was a very well-done, as Gretchen Darby said in the video. I think it was very well-presented, and we really appreciate Eddie Coulson being able to be a facilitator for that. He did a great job as someone outside of the community, coming in and really embracing the story of Prosper ISD, so that we could all learn about the impacts of growth and the facilities that were needed. So at this time, what I would love to hear from each one of you is really your heart for Prosper ISD and your story. We all landed here somehow, some way, and I think it's important for the community to know that you're not just board members who sit and make decisions at a monthly meeting, but you also are parents, you also are community members. You serve in different capacities within your professional roles, and I think it's important for them to know that you're really no different than them when it comes to making decisions for our students in this district. You just happen to sit on a school board, which is a huge responsibility and one I know that none of you take lightly.
Yeah, I, Dr. Ferguson, as you and I have visited about this in the past, I know, I think back to over ten years ago, when we came here as a family, for my family, my wife was a counselor in a neighboring district, a great district, and she said, hey, by the time our oldest is going to kindergarten, I want to be in Prosper ISD. So like any smart husband, I said, okay, honey. And, you know, thank you, dear, for that. We got up here, and it's been absolutely amazing ever since. I mean, we now have five kids in the district. You know, it's, our girls are involved in the arts. My boys are still young, but involved in athletics, which I absolutely love. You know, coming, doing sports in high school for me was huge, and seeing the opportunity that our kids have up here now, no matter what it is that they're involved in, has been absolutely awesome. And so being up here, being a part of this, it's been great for our family, and we absolutely love it. So who else has got something?
I've talked several times, you guys and other people, about my own pride, my high school experience, and what that meant to me. My husband and I went to a very large public school in Dallas that had advanced academics and career and technical opportunities that people all over the city applied to go to. And we took full advantage of that, and it's something that we're still proud of today. But one of the challenges that we had was making deeper friendships with our classmates, because people did come from all over the city. So as we started our family, we wanted to find a district that would offer both, that academic excellence and an emphasis on, you know, higher academics, but also a strong sense of community that our kids could call home and that they'd want to come back to. So we moved to small-town Prosper in 2003, so we've been here 20 years. And I feel that our four kids did have that. It was the best of both worlds. Our kids took AP classes and dual credit, which I can't complain about the savings, since we're paying for four kids' college tuition. That was a huge benefit to them and to us. Our boys played football and lacrosse, and our daughter got to cheer seventh through twelfth grade and was one of the first varsity squads got to perform in the new stadium, so that was big news at our house. It was, but we didn't just go to games and pep rallies. We have attended drill teams, spring shows, and theater productions, and choir and orchestra concerts, too many to count over the last 20 years. And we continue to do so because this is home. Our older two have graduated and come back, and our younger two hope to as well. I've mentioned before that our daughter is in the, was in the Ready, Set, Teach program at PHS, and it was very important to her. She hopes to be one of the OGs. So my OGs that graduate and come back and teach. So my goal is to ensure that all these kids coming into our district not only have the opportunities that our kid had, our kids had, but even greater opportunities, but that they feel that this is home also, that they have that strong sense of pride to you.
Mr. Dial, what about you?
Yeah, we have been here seven years, and the reason we came up here was for the opportunity. And I think I've just come to learn through serving on Education Foundation, but even more so sitting on the board, the numerous opportunities that our campuses provide our kids and our staff, right, to grow and achieve at the highest level. And so having younger kids, twenty- And so having younger kids, 20, 30, let's see, 2033, 2037, and 2041 graduating years.
Forty-one.
Yeah, I know, it's crazy. To think about that and to think about, you know, what we're building and the quality, the legacy that's being created and how they're going to get to be a part of that, not having, you know, I have my own excitement or memories from what I did in high school, but just to think about at their age right now, not having really found that true passion yet, that Prosper is going to offer them a variety of things to be able to help them figure out what they are passionate about. And so, yeah, I'm just excited that we're having this conversation, and we have a community that supports the great place we've created here.
What about you, Mr. Cavender?
Yeah, I'm kind of like probably everybody that's up here, that, you know, when I moved here, I had a choice of any school district in DFW to go to, and we chose Prosper. You know, there was a lot of things that went into it. I had to spend 11 years as a reserve deputy. One of the big things I looked at was safety and security of the schools. One of the few schools that had officers on every campus for when my kids came here. That was important to me, to make sure that my kids would be safe. The other thing was things outside of the typical education, you're reading, writing, arithmetic, CTE programs, the ag program here. Both of my girls got heavily involved in the ag program, spent all four years through high school in the ag program, showed animals, and my daughter was the president of FFA her senior year. So, you know, they got to do things that a lot of places you don't have access to those things, and that was one of the reasons I liked Prosper so much, is that the things that they do above and beyond, just, that's what brought us here.
Mr. Linker, hey, you've got a great story. I know you came here, brought your family, so.
Yeah, sure. So our story's a little bit different. We, my wife is here tonight, Lyndi, she's been there for 15 years, 16 years. We have three kids, Parker's our oldest, she's in third grade, Ryan is our next, she's in first grade, and then we have Eli, who I believe is class of 2038. So by the time our kids graduate, we will have had all of our kids go K through 12. And I was saying, our story's a little different. We moved from California in 2021. We knew we wanted Texas, that was an easy decision. We didn't really know where we would land in Texas. Pretty quickly narrowed it down to DFW, and then started looking at school districts because that was what was most important to us. So we looked at Frisco, we looked at McKinney, but we kept hearing about Prosper, this little town north of Frisco. And it didn't take very long for us to decide that that's where we wanted to be, and I can't say how proud both my wife and I are to be in Prosper ISD, and especially to be one of the seven trustees sitting up here. Prosper is a special place. Thinking through the opportunities that we had is nothing like what our kids will have. I asked Dr. Ferguson earlier today how many certification programs we have. Our kids can do academics, they can do athletics, they can do arts, but they can also do 28 certifications in CTE, and we're adding, I think, three or four more this year. And so while I hope my kids want to go to college, if they don't, through their experience in Prosper, they're going to be able to have a real head start going into the workforce. So if we could do it all over again, we'd choose Prosper, and it's a real special place. Tonight's very special, too.
That's great. I agree with what you said. I think for all of us, if we could choose to do it over again, we would choose Prosper. So, Mr. Bridges?
Yeah, so we've been in Prosper for 18 years. When we arrived in Prosper, we had just opened our fourth campus, I think it was Folsom Elementary. And then five years after moving here, I joined the school board for the first time, for my first round. In those five years between when we moved here and when I joined the school board, growth, I wouldn't say it was explosive, it was maybe a firecracker. You could see it had started because in those five years, we added three schools, but I'm pretty sure that by the time I got on the school board, we had less than 5,000 kids. Fast forward to now, it's clear that there's been an explosion, right? We've got 20,000 more kids now at least than we did when I got here, and we built 20 new schools. And just this year, of course, we've opened four new campuses. That's a lot of groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings that I've been able to be a part of, a lot of good cookies. Both of my kids are proud graduates and products of this district. My son graduated in 2012. He was part of the state champion golf team in 2011, should have won it in 2012. Pull me aside if you want to talk about that. And then my daughter graduated in 2014. Both of them were very well-prepared for the next step, both in college and in their careers, particularly my daughter, who got her CNA certificate here at Prosper High School and is now a charge nurse at an Austin-area heart hospital, which is fun to see. But I, after all this time, I'm still as proud and excited about the district as I am, as I was when we moved here. I've seen firsthand how the exercise of fiscal responsibility, an unwavering commitment to excellence and high standards, and an unmatched group of educators can really lead to an unrivaled and exceptional experience for all children, even in the face of challenging growth. So my goal and my dream for Prosper ISD is that every child in this district is going to have the same kind of remarkable educational experience that my kids had, and even better. And that's why I came back to the board for a second go-around, and that's why I'm so excited about the work of this committee and what we're going to be doing tonight.
Yeah, perfect. Mr. Van Wolf, our newest board member.
So to echo a lot of the sentiment shared up here, we came here, obviously, for the schools. My wife and I came here in 2012, before we had any kids. We made a bet on Prosper ISD, and it's paid off exponentially. It's been an incredible blessing to see our kids grow. We've got a long way to go in the district, like many up here. We have one graduating in 2032, and then two more coming in 2035, good Lord willing. So it's been an incredible experience for us. We try to get plugged in everywhere we can. It's amazing. I had a tremendous amount of respect for public education, had a, just a great respect for Prosper ISD, but now seeing what I've seen just over the last few months has only heightened that. It's blown, truly blown me away, the amount of work that goes into offering that experience that Jim alluded to and so many others, each day for our kids, and I'm just so honored to be a part of it in a small way. I think like all of us as parents, we try to pay it forward and create a better experience than we all had growing up. My wife and I, both product of public schools, and got to see a great experience, and it worked well for us, but what we're doing here is just truly, truly special. And to do it every single day at the level that we do, the excellence from the people, the buildings, et cetera, it's one thing to maintain, but it's another thing to grow with the pace in which we have. We're growing more students in one year that were in Prosper ISD than when we moved here. And so it's hard enough to determine where all the buses are going to go and the kids and the campuses, but then to add and add and add at the pace we have, and it's the attitude of excellence we have. Our buildings are great, we do a lot of things really well, but the heart of our people are just truly, truly incredible and something to see, and now getting to see it in more detail just further reassures we're doing the right thing here. So big days ahead with a lot, obviously a lot of decisions to make and a lot of more growth to come, but I feel what we've done in the past has set us up well to the future, continue to grow, and just honored to be a part of it.
Yeah, I agree. So thank you all for sharing that. Dr. Ferguson, I know that you've got some specific dates here to kind of share with us.
Yeah, so probably our audience can't see this, but I think that's actually a good thing because it means that we've had a lot of progress and offered a lot of things to our students. If you look back to 2002, there were less than 1,000 kids in the entire district. At this point in time, for us to have 1,000 kids on a campus is really nothing because that happens pretty frequently here and then some. So only three campuses with a $7.22 million budget. So things have changed pretty drastically in a small amount of time. So we roll into 2016, and you've got 10,000 kids, we've got Windsong Ranch opening, so the west side of our district started really coming online at that point in time. Hughes, so the south part of our district started coming online a little bit more because that was kind of our first reach over to the south side of the district to accommodate growth. But something very special, too, when you look at that, is our fine arts program, that's when we started Suzuki Strings, which is our feeder program and a choice program in our district to offer our kids who are looking for that orchestra opportunity. And we've seen our orchestra program grow immensely. So thinking about back to 2016 when that program came online, and then what it's done for us moving forward, it's been pretty remarkable. And as you can see with our academic piece with dual credit and then with AP courses, really ratcheting those up at that time, because those things weren't offered way back when. So really, how do we just keep this forward-facing motion and really stay committed to being a teaching and learning organization to give our kids opportunities that just abound? And that's really what I task our team with all the time, is what will we do that will be so next level that it's not offered anywhere else, so that we can provide the absolute best to the community that supports us like no other. And then you can see as we roll into 2022, 25,000 kids last year, which that's not real true, because by the time we ended the year, we were even over that number, but the growth is immense. But I will always say this about growth, it is our greatest opportunity to improve every second of every day, because every time we get a new student walking in the door, a new family walking in the door, something magical is going to happen because of that family landing here. And I think sometimes that can be lost when you have thousands of people moving in, but I truly see it that way. When I think back over time and look at this milestone and think about all the programs, whether it was archery, or it's Suzuki Strings, or it's more AP courses, or more dual-credit courses offered to kids, that was because there was a demand and a push because of growth, and it just made us better for everybody who was already here, but then for kids who are not even here yet. So I appreciate our team and hats off to them and to the board, you're really committing to making it the best of the best. So this is a little bit of alarming slide, but it makes you kind of go, okay, so we are growing, so we're not just making this up in our mind. This is true data and specific data. So five-year enrollment percentage, so from 2017, 2018 to 2022, 2023, Prosper ISD has grown and increased at a rate of 106%, 106% in five years, which is crazy. And when you look at all of the districts that kind of surround us that are also considered fast-growth or kind of a hotspot, Melissa ISD is the next one coming in at 102, 103% growth, and then everybody else kind of falls off from there. But you can see people are moving here in droves, and the number one reason they move here is the education, just like each one of you were sharing about opportunities. So I think this is a pretty profound slide of why we're going to need some facilities moving forward. And then, of course, there's this, and Mr. Van Wolf spoke to it so beautifully, this is the heartbeat and the heart and soul of our campuses. It's our staff, it's our students, it's our parent volunteers, it's people really committing at a high level to make sure that our kids have the absolute best. And kind of interesting, but Liliana, which is one of our newest subdivisions, newest elementary, they're using Prosper ISD as their recruiting mechanism. Like, why would you come here? Because there's a great education, so buy a house here. And the developers do love that about our school district because they can sell homes pretty quickly. It's not hard to get a home sold in this community or in this school district. And evidence of Liliana obviously grew just a little bit more than what we thought they were going to be initially, and so those numbers went through the roof. Something that we're not, is not a new thing to us, and so really a great amount of work of really watching those numbers daily when it comes to enrollment, whether it's our PMS department, our HR department, making sure we're equipped and ready to go. I have another video for you. First day of school. So that says it all right there. What a great opportunity to be able to engage with so many great families. But what we have to remember is that we, what we continue to put out through our facilities, we're giving school choice with every new facility that we build. When you think about the CTE programs that y'all were talking about, many school districts make the choice, the board will make the choice to build a CTE center. It's only going to be able to hold so many kids at any given time. Prosper ISD, and this is a huge piece of the work that we do, it's the comprehensive high school. And when you look at opening a high school, just like opening Walnut Grove, the number of opportunities that just immediately went all over that building through all of those different CTE programs, within our staff, being able to rise up to be a department chair or counselor in an AP, and there were more opportunities all the way across, parents coming in who may have not have been volunteering, but said, now I'm going to be able to volunteer because this new facility opened. When we look at our early childhood school and what that's going to offer to our youngest learners, to see what's going to happen in the future, it's pretty exciting what we get to do each and every day. So our challenges of fast growth, managing the logistics, the rapid growth, but I will tell you again, the opportunities that walk in with every single person who comes in, but it does create a demand on us that sometimes we're not all super comfortable with. One of the things that none of us like are portable classrooms, but that is a real reality in Prosper ISD. The greatest day ever, and Dr. Bradley says this all the time, is that that will be the day that we can get those trailers sold to the next school district and get them out of Prosper ISD. That's what we want, but we have currently 134 classrooms and 58 portable buildings across Prosper ISD. So that's nearly 5,000 students sitting in those facilities. Hall Elementary, and we see this dynamic happen pretty frequently, we open a building, there's no portables in their first year, and the second year, we're putting portables on that campus because the growth rate, there's a need and a demand. But I do appreciate the board kind of increasing that footprint of schools to help us with starting to accommodate some of that growth and hopefully shaving off some of those portables as we move forward.
Dr. Ferguson, the 134 classrooms and the portables, you've given us a stat on that before, that's roughly about the same amount of classrooms that are at PHS. Is that correct? That we have recreated in portables around the, around the district?
Yeah. It's crazy.
Not what we want, but what we must do in this time.
That's right.
And then these are just a few of our highlights, some of the great things that you all have put in front of our kids for them to be able to achieve, whether it's FFA that Mr. Cavender was talking about, or our future health professionals that Mr. Bridges was talking about. One of my favorite to talk about is the high school state champion barbecue team. Absolute favorite. The food is outstanding, so. And here is our early childhood school, which is just one of the neatest spaces on the planet. And what we have to remember, too, about our facilities, because we build such a unique design, it's a recruitment tool. That building was one of the fastest to get staffed, and when you think about the teachers needing three certifications to be able to serve on that campus, it felt like it was going to be a mountain to climb, but because of the facility that we built, they said, I want to work there, that looks really cool. And the number of people who want to just go and tour it and see it was with PTO council today, and they were like, when can we go over there? And I'm like, let me know, and we'll go on a tour. Be ready, though. Be ready, the four-year-olds can boss you around.
Students were so excited to start school on the first day. More smiles than tears from those little preschoolers.
Crying to stay, right?
That's right.
They wanted to stay.
They wanted to stay.
Don't make me go home. And then Walnut Grove, that you know very well, has gotten a ton of looks and a ton of information out there about it. It is next level and first-class all the way, but I will say, it kind of amazes me because I know people talk about the food court. PHS built in 2009 as a food court. It's no different. Rock Hill High School opened in 2020, it's basically the same exact template, the same amount of square footage, just with a few different offerings on the CTE, which we've done in every single campus, but Walnut Grove has gotten just a huge amount of attention, which has been very positive and great, but it does worry me, like, who else is moving here right now? So hold on just a minute. And then I think we have Mr. Doug Witt with us this evening to do a financial presentation related to the calling of a bond election.
All right, good evening. It's good to be a part of this. I really appreciate the opportunity. I think I'm going to borrow a clicker.
Yes, sir. There's a big arrow, just hit that.
They have to dumb it down for me. Anyway, it's good to be, it's good to be here. Obviously, we talk about growth of students, I talk about growth of tax base and the financial plan that matches to that. So I'll just start with a graph you've seen from us before, and this is called the Bond Buyer's Index. This is a marathon, not a sprint with respect to the size of bond programs, so we will be issuing bonds in all types of markets. But when you look at this, to the far right of the graph, you'll see a statistic there that's below the average that runs across the middle at right around 4%. So even though the short-term interest rates that the Federal Reserve controls and is in the news, they'll be in Jackson Hole, Wyoming, talking about raising short-term interest rates, our medium-to-long-term bond rates have actually stabilized and been stable for a time. And to the far right of the graph, you'll see kind of the up and down. The bottom of the graph, the 2020, was record low, top of the graph was 2008, record high, that was the precursor to the Great Recession, and then the average runs across the middle there at 4%. So all in all, we have good financial markets. We were talking earlier about the number of school bonds that came to market this summer in Texas with the permanent school fund guarantee. It was a in Texas with the Permanent School Fund Guarantee. It was a massive amount. The market absorbed it. There is a lot of investment in municipal bonds, and particularly Texas school bonds, which are pretty much risk-free to the investor. So, no problem. One of the other things about the graph, you'll see Vs at the bottoms, and then you see the rooftop at the top. But over the past 10 years, our bond models look static, but they're not. They're dynamic bond models. You've refinanced existing bonds like 10 times over the, six times over the past 10 years for about $60 million worth of interest cost savings. So you are actively managing the debt position of the district. And when the audience sees the Vs in those markets, those are our opportunities to lower the borrowing costs, which you've done on multiple occasions here in this district. Here's your tax rate history. At the bottom is the green is the Interest in Sinking Fund or Debt Service Tax Rate. It is flat at 50 cents and has been for a very long period of time. The black bars are the MNO rate, and we've had a declining MNO rate. And that goes through 22, 23 on the screen. You're having the same thing happen again with tax compression this year. So our tax rate through all of this growth has been declining over time with a steady INS tax rate, which is what we will work with on a go-forward basis. Your taxable value history, this is the growth that I talk about. When you look at 1819, the taxable assessed value growth was a billion seven, then a billion five, then a billion two. So it keeps stepping up. And then over the past three years, it's skyrocketed. Last year was 4.3 billion, or this year for 23, 24 is $4.3 billion worth of growth. To put that in perspective, when you first reached a billion dollars of taxable value in this district in 06, 07, it took you 10 years to get to 5 billion. In one year, you grew over 4.4 billion. It's just an amazing story. So, again, you're going to hear from me about bond capacity, et cetera, and how you implement this type of bond program. You implement it over time as the value allows. And if you're in a billion seven growth market like 1819, that's going to be a different bond issuance per year. And if you're in a $4 billion growth market, that's going to be a different number. The 4 billion type of growth is very, very consistent with the size of bond program and the needs that you have, that your committee has outlined for you. So those are some of our growth numbers in tax base. This past year, we only sold about $250 million worth of bonds into $4 billion worth of growth. So your bond capacity is already existing from six months ago. So what are the bond capacity factors, the type of assets being financed? One component of your plan is technology. Technology will be amortized over a short period of time. In fact, I just had a bond issue closed with the Attorney General's Office, and they asked us to prove up that the technology portion was over seven years or less. In our case, we shoot for three to five years, but we will be able to outline that that is the amortization for those items. New schools, we can go up to 40 years in the state of Texas. We generally go 30 years in this district. So if I'm financing all renovations, my bond capacity is going to be different than if I'm financing new schools. So that's one of the factors in the bond capacity. Next base is the tax base level. Again, we're around $20 billion of tax base this year. And so that's a big starting point. And then again, the acceleration of that, the growth of that, really drives our bond capacity on an ongoing basis. And of course, in this district, we implement the bonds that are approved by voters over a period of time. You can ask me how long it's going to take. I can give you an answer, but it will change. I think the last time I estimated about 10 years, because we were growing at a billion three per year. And we had a billion three of bonds. So, I said, that's about the 10-year process. So if you take 2.8 billion and you divide it by 4 billion, we're going to be about seven years. But don't quote me on that. We're going to implement it as we can afford it. And that's what we have to do in these situations. So the speed with which you grow, the length of time to implement the bond program, it will be over a period of time, whether it's six years or 11 years is to be determined. Interest rate levels, obviously, we can issue more bonds to lower the interest rates. And that's why we drive down the cost with refinancing and the use of some of the adjustable rates. And then our tax rate level is given to us. It is set. State law is the last bullet point on our bond capacity. As you well know, we got a new set of laws this summer related to school finance. It includes an increase to the homestead exemption, a very, very large increase to the homestead exemption. State law requires that to be offset with what's called Hold Harmless Payments that go into the Interest in Sinking Fund Debt Service Fund. So now state funding and state law will be a component of our facility finance plan and our bond models that you'll see from me going forward. And it's due to the very large increase to the homestead exemption. So for the taxpayers, not only are the tax rates coming down, but the homestead exemption is going up. So it's been characterized as the largest tax break in Texas history. Whether or not that's 100% true or not, but it is big. It's big, and it's reflected in the numbers that we have. So the preliminary bond program analysis, we are sticking with the billion dollars of taxable assessed value growth leads to about $100 million of new issuance. So in this district, the good news is, as we grow, that creates the bond capacity to build the facilities that are caused by that growth. That's as simple as I can say it. And it's about a billion dollars worth of growth for ever $100 million of bond capacity on a year-in, year-out basis. It does kind of simplify the overall bond model, but I think it's a good working number for what we're talking about when you look at, okay, how long will it take to do 2.8 billion? How long did it take us to do a billion three? And those numbers have been pretty consistent. As I mentioned earlier, we issued 250 million prior to receiving the certified value. The certified value growth was far in excess of anything that bond model had put forward. So again, you're standing on bond capacity today as we speak. $4 billion worth of growth, you take into account the homestead exemption, it's 3 billion. But then we have the AES, state aid that comes into that fund in lieu of taxes due to the homestead exemption. So the next to last bullet point there, again, repeating, new growth supports new bonds for that growth. When you take all of this, it can be overwhelming because that's a lot of school buildings over a long period of time. In this district, we tend to have a rolling three-year bond model. And that way, we know that a high school is roughly a three years' worth of construction. A middle school is worth roughly two years' worth of construction. And an elementary is roughly one year worth of construction. So we can look at and build a model that says, okay, we need to open three new elementary schools, one middle school and one high school. And we go through that three-year construction process that gets there. So it's a rolling model that allows us each and every year to take a forecast and a look. Again, when you implement something over a five- to 10-year period, I promise you, somewhere in that period, we're going to be talking about some sort of economic activity that's different than what we're talking about today. And you have done a wonderful job of being able to handle those situations, both accelerate and decelerate as necessary, depending on the growth of students and the growth of tax base. So this will be a model that is an ongoing process to implement so that we do not get out in front of ourselves, and we maintain the fiscal health, which is another component. Obviously, the teachers and the classroom and the children and the families are what drive it. From my perspective, this financial institution has done an outstanding job of managing the growth, both on the INS side and the issuance of bonds, and on the maintenance and operating side. So you'd be commended from that perspective from where I sit. So I think that is it for me. Are there any questions that I might answer?
No.
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you, Doug.
Mr. Witt, I do think the gentleman from Pope would say that your timelines sound great to them, but that's not always the way it rolls out at Prosper. Would I be correct?
I have to give him something to correct me on.
Okay, so back to the recommendation, priorities of the committee. Obviously, growth, trying to address that, modernizing our older buildings. Because that's one thing that's happening. They're starting to get age as we build more new buildings. You have buildings that need some TLC, additional facilities to support our campuses, safety and security, technology, infrastructure, flexibility, and really in our devices. Because the thing is, is do we know what a kid will be asked to use in 2030? We don't. We have no idea what that new technology device. But we've got a plan for what, potentially what we would need as far as expense. And then buying land as fast as we can.
Yeah, I might add, Dr. Ferguson, I think, just want to take a minute to say thanks to our Prosperity PD, Chief Vessel, Assistant Chief Wolverton, our Safety and Security Committee. Just always putting that first and foremost. We had the opportunity, a few members of the board, to go and see a live-action test of the bullet-resistant film that we have put on campuses. And one of the steps, one of the many steps we do to keep our campuses safe. And I'm happy to report that I think we are getting good return on our investment there, that it is going to slow, God willing, never an intruder there. But we'll slow them down enough to keep our students and staff safe. And so just want to say thanks and reiterate that that is and should remain a priority for, you know, what we are looking forward to.
And I love the idea of buying land. It's, it hasn't, the years we've lived here, it hasn't gotten any cheaper. And we're running out of it. So I think as we can afford it and do our planning for it, I think it's going to be very helpful to gobble it up. We know what's got to be done. So I like that idea.
Just as a reminder, we need six more elementary sites and two middles is what it's looking like. We do have all of our high school sites secured, though, because of what Mr. Bridges was talking about. Words of current, but words of the past, too, really trying to secure that land and as quickly as we possibly could. All right. So the recommendation is at the high standards demanded by our community. I've had people ask like, well, why is the surrounding districts, why don't they build like what Prosper builds for a high school? It's because a standard was set back in 2009 when Prosper High School opened, and we can't lower that standard because then you have kids that won't have that same experience. And we want to make sure that our kids are able to really be able to do all the things that we ever dreamed of for them. And we continue to be able to do that. It's one of the reasons I think many of you chose this district. I know it's one of the reasons that my husband and I chose this district is because we knew that our kids, it was going to be endless opportunities because of what was happening here. So, addressing the projected growth, conservative measured and informed, making sure that we're keeping you abreast of everything that's going on when it comes to this. Allowing flexibility and responsiveness to our growth patterns. Because it, to Mr. Witt's point, there can be ebb and flow at different times based on what's happening with the economy or different actions that are being taken at the legislative sessions. And then obviously, the increased construction cost. If anyone has built a home since 2020, they know what we're talking about. The numbers went through the roof. Well, it was no different for schools, facilities. Those numbers went through the roof, and the supply and demand, and just trying to get shipments for different supplies. And when you can't get those things, the price goes up for the person who does have it, right? And so it's a, it's a market that kind of got out of whack and out of control a little bit. But we had to do what we had to do because the growth was still coming here at just an immense rate. Think too, one of the things, and this is highlighted in here, is that Mr. Witt hit on it. But on the interest in sinking side, this will not result in a tax rate increase for our community.
Can I, I have a couple of thoughts on that. I think everybody's probably gotten a lot of questions. I think that's one of the biggest misconceptions is that if we pass another bond, taxes are going to go way up. Admittedly, I didn't really understand how all that worked before moving here and being on the board. But like Dr. Penn has said, the last couple of months, and Dr. or Mr. Witt hit on tonight, we have two different parts of our tax rate. We have INS, which is already at the max. It cannot go higher, and it's not going to go any lower. It's been at that since 2007. The other part of our tax rate is MNO, which pays for maintenance operations, pays for our teachers. And that has actually gone down every year since 2019. I have some figures. Before 2019, it was $1.67. The year after, it was reduced to 1.568. 2020, it was reduced to 1.4927. 2021, 1.4603. And 2022, 1.4429. And last month, Dr. Penn had presented a proposed tax rate of 1.3629. Actually, it looks like that's going to be 1.2575. So we're actually going to make the biggest tax reduction in Prosper ISD history next week, hopefully, by reducing MNO from 1.4429 to 1.2575. So lots of misinformation. Failing the bond is not going to reduce taxes. It will impact our kids for a long time. And then the other misconception is, well, why have we not put in staff salaries into this bond? I think all of us would like to throw that in if we could. But by law, we are not able to use bond money for salaries and those types of expenses. Probably wish we could.
Great job. That's a lot of history and a lot of information.
I didn't pay attention.
The one thing that continues to go up, though, is the value of our homes. And so that sometimes can be a confusing point. Wait, did the taxes go down because my tax bill is high? Well, it's because we are a destination district and people want their kids here. And so that makes, when you've got a good school district, those values of homes are going to go up because people are trying their best to get in here. But applaud the efforts of that tax compression for multiple years. And thank you for that explanation because that's one of the questions I get all the time. So there's not a tax increase. No, tax increase, 50 cents since 2007.
Yeah. I mean, we are at an all-time low. But because we are Prosper ISD and Destination District, people continue to move here for the same reasons that we all did. Do you say 106% over the last five years? We're going to continue to grow.
For about the next 10 to 15.
Little time to get there.
Just a little bit of time. Okay, so what we've heard from the committee, so you can see what they were looking at for new schools and then support facilities. One of the things that I want to point out, and I think you all are aware of this, the 2019 bond of 1.3 billion had a Naterium, Professional Learning Center, admin, outdoor learning. We had to make decisions because of the growth that was happening, that those things would not get constructed, that they would be pushed to the back of the bond. And then when we got to the tail end, would we have money to take on those facilities? Because we needed buildings for kids. And I think everybody in this community fully understands that. So we have pushed that. Now, Naterium number two, we'll go ahead and be able to build that out of the 2019 bond with funds that are left there. But the admin, the outdoor learning center, the professional learning center, that's a combo on that. We're going to have to push that onto this bond, this go-around. And this building was built in 1963, and we're outgrowing it. We do have staff members. Their offices are scattered literally all over the district, whether it's leased space or being housed in Walnut Grove for at least a year until we don't have that space anymore. So there is this piece of what's happened with this district over time, and this facility is not really holding us at the way that it needs to. So the modernization, so they recommended this also. We looked at a facility study, looking at those campuses that are going to need some TLC specifically to help them. And then expanding campuses potentially to give them more square footage, more opportunities, things that maybe were not in play in this district at the time when that building was built. But now we're going to need that in order to provide equity because it may be sitting at Hayes Middle School and Rushing Middle School, but then Reynolds doesn't have it, for example. And then obviously, turf and track, just trying to keep up with those. For any of our soccer, right, or football, we want concussion-grade surface underneath that turf in order to help our kids. Because I know you all know everything that's going on with concussions. So we don't want to ever cut corners when it comes to the potential of that accident happening. And then you can see the safety and security measures. Mr. Bridges talked about buying more land for the two middle schools and six more elementaries. And then obviously, buses and vehicles, and that's white fleet when we say vehicles. So we'll have tennis kids sometimes or prepare to prosper our special education students. And you'll see them in a white suburban. That's white fleet. So that's what that is including. And then technology for infrastructure and then devices for students, staff, and teachers. And that brings us to a 2.6 and some change billion-dollar bond proposed from that committee. So would love to hear the thoughts. We had three board members who sat on the long-range planning as a subcommittee to be able to interact with our community and really hear what they were saying during those meetings that we held. So I would love if you all would kind of share your thoughts with the rest of the board of what you saw that happened during that time.
Yeah, I'll start. I'm really grateful for the commitment. It was a time commitment. There was some brain challenge, you know, really think about, wrap your head around. There was some brain challenge, you know, really think about, wrap your head around the growth. I'm thankful for the intentionality behind the planning of that group, acknowledging that we had people that were represented, elementary and secondary parents, fine arts parents, special needs parents, athletics parents, grandparents, business and civic leaders, new and old Prosper, and the Prosper ISD staff. And I'm really thankful for the staff and showing up and facilitating a lot of the conversation, but also being really intentional in listening, right? There was a lot of information presented and people are responding a lot of out of emotion. And so staff and the three of us that were there being really intentional in listening and trying to hear what the community members were saying as they worked towards this thoughtful presentation.
Yeah, I thought it was very important that there was such a good cross section of our district. And like you said, from east to west, young and old, how long have you been here? And that we were able to meet with all the different groups. Mr. Coulson had us, you know, assorted at each table and then we would switch tables so that we wouldn't just talk to people that were like minded, but that we were able to truly hear the opinions of everybody in the group. Thought that was important.
And on the, I think it was the second meeting we had, they took us to Rucker. Rucker's our oldest elementary in the district. And when we went there, they took us on a new bus. And then they brought us back on an old bus. And it was interesting to see and learn about how lifecycle of the bus is 15 years. And, you know, we opened up Walnut Grove and we think everything's brand new, but Rucker's aging. And so in part of the recommendations, they've got, you know, 35 million recommended for new buses and white fleet renovations to Rucker. And so it was really cool for the community to see that and take a tour of an older campus that has a ton of character, but.
Needs a little work. It was fun to, because we didn't tell anyone that we were doing that. So when the bus got here, it was this nice shiny bus. And so we went to Rucker, toured it, and then the bus was parked in the same place. And so as you're getting on the bus and people started like looking around like, wait, is this the bus we rode in? It was the old bus. And so, well, this one's 15 years old. And, oh, okay. Yeah. So it was, it was a good exercise, just because our kids are experiencing that every day when they get on a bus. So we want to make sure that this committee certainly saw and felt that as well. Was there anything that you all, from your perspective, that you felt like maybe the committee, there was a split or maybe more conversation on certain topics? Something that you feel like maybe you need to discuss a little bit more?
Yeah, I think it was interesting to hear and to echo everyone's thank you. Just on behalf of the board, it was incredible to see the amount of folks that came together and just share their ideas, varying viewpoints you heard. The one thing I heard out of it was there was not necessarily a split decision, but there was some additional conversation around the Performing Arts Center. Was that truly needed? And as we saw in the presentation, it's not captured in here. What's interesting for folks to understand is that, you know, the decision we would make tonight would be to simply put it on the ballot and give the voters the opportunity to make that decision, if that is something the community feels that it needs. So I think it's something, that was the one thing I think that at least I heard that stood out from. Feel great about this. There were some varying opinions on it, but I think it's worth considering and put out for a vote. Let the community tell us.
Yeah. And that's one of the things that as a board, we will discuss here tonight and ultimately make the decision on is, hey, do we just, do we put it out there for the community to decide? Because ultimately, they're the ones that have shown up in our last bonds. They approved all of this. We just simply put this out there for them to decide. So.
And they would have seen something like this in 2019. It was part of what we talked about when we did our bond package. We just had to prioritize schools.
Yeah.
That's where it ended up. So I'd love to see it back on the, on the ballot.
Same here.
Well, we've done such a lot of hard work with our performing arts kids. I mean, we've got Suzuki strings and all the other stuff. They need a platform. You know, they've got their local schools, but they need a place that they can go perform to the whole community. And I think giving the community the opportunity to decide whether that's what they want or not, I think that's a great idea.
I agree.
I agree.
All right.
Any more discussion on that?
I mean, hey, I, I like the idea of putting it on. I think that our performing arts, I mean, hey, I go back to my kids. I have kids that are involved in that. And I love athletics as well, but I think that we would be well served by putting this into this bond because, man, those kids are dedicated in arts and they need a place to be able to go and do this. So for one, I'm a big fan of that.
For sure.
I did love how we had some, a couple of parents who were like, let's just go for it all, you know? And so I think it's nice to hear that from our community, that we do have a very supportive community who knows what Prosper ISD is up against. And it's like, hey, let's just go do it. So.
I, hey, I did too. I was, I mean, when I first heard that number though, you mentioned it earlier, 4.2, I mean, that's kind of boing. You feel that number. But hey, you feel 2 point, you know, between two and a half and three as well. I mean, those are significant numbers out there. But every time that we've done a bond here at Prosper, it's been a big number out there, going back to the 710 that we did, the 1.3, it has always been a big number. And then we've seen, you know, on the back end of that hindsight being 2020, that that was the right call.
Yeah. The difference has been just, I mean, for so many years, we were worried about getting that $1 billion of taxable growth, right? Because Prosper was rooftops. We didn't have very much commercial stuff at all. And so the idea of getting a billion dollars of increase, it was just, it was, it was hard to imagine. And now that's caught up, right? We've got the, so much commercial going on now. To see that it went up 4.3 billion last year is staggering. So.
And hey, I think that we take this opportunity right now to thank our town council and our EDC for the work that they've been doing that has helped that along. Because Mr. Witt, I remember the meetings that I would sit at that you talked about, well, the billion dollars are now just blowing through that number. It's crazy to see that. So.
That's right.
Okay. So a couple proposition language that put together, not knowing which way you all might be leaning. So you're going to have an opportunity to look at what would this look like proposition language with the performing arts, because we wanted to make sure that you had that. So you can see proposition A for the bond 2023. You can see the land, buses, safety, security, school facility, support facilities. So that's what would be contained. And that's the largest dollar amount that we would be looking at because of what's contained in that. And this is where we would land and what needs to happen. One of the things like you've got high school four on there. So you know, in the past, you would see some crossover, right? Where we may be pulling from one bond to get a project started, but then it will end with the next one. So we'll have some of those moments within this bond cycle as well. And then you can see kind of reviewing all that we have talked about with modernizing our existing facilities to get them where we feel the community wants them. And then safety and security, buses, and then land. And then proposition B, and this is one thing, in 2019, we had one single proposition and then the law changed. And so you had to then kind of parcel this out and put them into propositions because the state said this is the new way that you're going to do things and follow this law. So that's why you're seeing these broken out into letters for proposition. So proposition B would be technology for new devices for students, staff and teachers. And you can see the $140 million price tag for that. Proposition C, so this would be for a new stadium. And some people are like, gosh, we already have that beautiful stadium. And we do. And it's incredible. But when you have four high schools, you're going to be maxed out trying to have games. Because you'll be having a game Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, and it will be in constant demand. One of the things that we like to do, and to Mr. Cavender's point about our kids excelling in fine arts, we have a goal that they go and perform at a high school if they're a middle school kid. It's a recruitment and it's a retention in that program. It's no different in athletics. So we will do that with our middle school. So if Hayes and Rogers are playing each other, we try to give them an opportunity to go play at our stadium. So those kids can go, I'm going to stay committed to being in football and I'm going to stay. But we wouldn't be able to provide that if we're in such high demand with our own high school games happening. And so we don't want to take that away from them. This would be a scaled down as far as seating capacity, because our stadium right now is at 12,000. So this would go back down to 8,000. And then when we look at hosting maybe regional track meets and things like that, this stadium that we currently have no track, where you can have a track meet, this would give us that opportunity at this stadium to be able to run track meets and specifically being able to allow our Special Olympics to participate in that stadium also. Because right now, they currently participate down at Reynolds.
Which is a great day. And if any of y'all have been to it, you know, it's a blast for all of it. One of the best days in Prosper ISD is Special Olympics Day every Monday.
No doubt. And so each of our schools then would have the opportunity to play at both stadiums. They would rotate through the larger.
We would just have to work out the schedule and what, but it, when you think about the staffing demands on our people too, that they would have to be on point Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, get Sunday and then back to work on Monday, we could end up losing staff over that. They won't have time to see their own families with that type of schedule. So you can see, this is just a picture. That is not yet. So just a picture. And then proposition D, if you all are wanting to put this on there, then that would be the Performing Arts Center for Dance Theater and Music, Visual Arts. And then again, just pictures, no mockup. This is not the reality of it, but just putting that so y'all can kind of have your mind go, okay, this is what this might look like or be like for our children and our staff.
The committee gave us some information on a Performing Arts Center. It was approved. Mr. Bridges, you spoke about that a second ago. 2019, we did that. Let's talk a little more about that because we want to make sure that everybody has a good understanding of that.
No, and I'm glad you asked. So currently, our high school auditoriums, and this was part of the conversation with the Long Range Planning Committee, our high school auditoriums are state of the art. They're high class, the equipment in there, kids are learning how to run light boards and do all sorts of things that we want them to do through their coursework. The seating is at 1,000. That's the capacity at Prosper High School, Rock Hill High School and Walnut Grove. What we would be looking at for this facility may be more in that 2,500 seat range. There is a whole dynamic though, of trying to get the right acoustics and sounds. So you don't want to get so big that you lose the sound that you're wanting to gain out of that performance. But when I've been at holiday performances, if we have Reynolds and PHS band, it's standing room only and you can't even sit down in there. And that's not the experience we want for our families, that they can't sit down and enjoy a holiday concert. This opportunity also with this performing arts, I can see a lot of opportunities as being able to connect with our municipalities and community partners. So whether it's McKinney or Frisco or Prosper or Salina, I think it will open some doors that we don't currently have. And that sometimes can be a frustrating thing. I know some of you have children that are in dance and I've been asked that multiple times. Can we have a holiday recital or do the Nutcracker at one of your high schools? And the answer is always met with no, because we've got holiday performances and we're booked and packed. So this might give us a little more opportunity. What I see too happening with this, we're always trying to plan for a tomorrow for a kid. And so when you look at middle school, trying to get them on that high school stage, right? You want them to stay in theater and go from middle school to high school. You want your high school kids to go, okay, and so what's next for me? And if it's just the high school auditorium that they practice in all the time, they may not be dreaming of their next. We give them something like a performing arts center. All of a sudden, they start dreaming of being part of the Dallas Symphony. They start dreaming about being on Broadway because they got to perform on this larger stage in this facility that was provided to them through Prosper ISD. So we have to think about those, those benefits well beyond that we don't even know if they're going to happen, but we have to tee it up so that there's the possibility for our students. So this would be the grand total with the performing arts added in to the 2.8 billion. And then to Mr. Linker's point, the zero tax rate increase because we are capped at 50 cents on the interest in sinking that are known as INS and have been since 2007. Questions? This is a huge decision for a school board.
And it will be presented as four components on the ballot. Right? So yeah, four propositions. Right.
A, B, C, and D.
In November?
Yeah, in this November. So Super Tuesday for this being done. Questions, thoughts, anything? Because our next thing here in the, in the agenda is we'll have an action item on that if we want to call. I will say, I was looking over this and one of the things that kind of hopped out to me, it was under Prop A. I noticed the cost of high school number five is on there. We had to factor in inflation in that. So that is why that number is higher than what we've seen on these others. Man, I think we all hope and pray that it is not that. But we should also be planning for that, which we have done in this bond. So I am, I'm grateful that we have, but yeah, let's all pray for less inflation.
If we had known what we know now, we would have planned for more inflation in the 2019 bond. It just didn't, it was 6% is what we planned on and it was not nearly enough. Obviously, we know that now with everything that happened and everything going through the roof on pricing. So we certainly wanted to make sure, because the last thing that we want is that we would have to be coming back to the community even sooner. We don't want that. And so we wanted to make sure that as we were looking at each of these numbers, we were projecting above that 6% because we knew that that didn't work in 2019 and didn't last as long as we needed it to. So we want to kind of prepare for the worst and the best all at the same time to ensure that we'll have the funds that we need to continue to move this district forward.
Yeah, I think going back to the slide that was the LR, Long Range Planning Committee recommendation, I thought it was, it's several backs, so don't worry about going back there. But I do think, you know, there are some big numbers in this recommendation. And, but I think it would be poor planning on our part if we didn't take into consideration, you know, what we, and learn from where we came from. And, and so as, you know, we process this, as I process this, that's kind of where I'm at, is we know it's a zero tax rate increase, that 50 cents is going to remain. But this is getting the approval from our community to be able to take care of needs when needs arise. And so I think that's what we have to consider is this is getting approval to take care of those needs so that we're not stuck with some of the challenges we're facing right now.
Yeah. And I think to Jordan's point, I mean, all the data that's been presented historically, it's not slowing down. It's very much a need. And I think that all the work has been done in extreme detail to ensure we're set up for many years to come for the growth of the community that will truly impact all students. And the fact that there's no tax rate increase, given the significant need and what we know is ahead, it's very much a need. So I have no reservations or concerns with it.
I have two final questions.
Yes, sir.
So if the bond passes, is the tax rate going up?
No, sir.
And if the bond fails, is the tax rate going down?
No.
Okay.
No, it will stay. You all will actually adopt and set the tax rate next Monday. And then that is it. And it won't, it won't change because of a bond election. Now, it could be extremely detrimental when a bond fails, especially in fast growth, knowing what we need and the facilities that we need. That has been a question. That means more portables are coming if we fail a bond, which none of us, I don't think I've ever met a parent who said, hey, I'd love more portables to come in. I've never heard that. So that means more portables. It means campuses start getting closed and then we start, you need to go to this campus, you can't go to your home campus. And we've seen some of that dynamic most recently that we've had to do. So it can be extremely detrimental to the children.
And I assume that would bring property values down?
Yes. Because then you'll have teachers who are going to say, I'm not working here anymore. And they'll go find a district where there are facilities opening. And it is a recruitment tool when a building opens. They love coming into a brand new school. It's a ton of work, but they love the energy around it. But if we pack their classes really high and really tight, teachers won't stay very long. They don't, they don't get paid as we know, even though you all have tried your best to compensate them. But they will go find somewhere else where they can control the dynamic and there's less students. But failed bonds mean class sizes go up and nobody wants that.
And to the point that you made earlier, the biggest tax decrease in the ISD history proposed coming this next week. So I feel like good things are on the horizon. Okay. With that, any other questions, discussions right now? Okay. Then I believe that we are at the action item portion of this. So there is a, this is an action item. Does anybody have a recommendation that they would like to bring before the board this evening?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the order calling a bond election to be held. I move that the board approve the order calling a bond election to be held by the Prosper Independent School District, making provision for the conduct of the election and resolving other matters related to such election.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Okay, there is a motion and a second. Any more discussion? I know that we've had a good amount of that this evening and I want to thank all of y'all for that. It's a very important decision for our district, so thank you for that. But anything else, any final thoughts?
Just to confirm, this is for all four propositions, including the performing arts?
A, B, C and D, yes, sir. The numbers, we've had them in here. They will be made public on here, very public on this stuff. So yes, sir, it will.
So Prop A, language. So I do want y'all to see that in the community, you see that, that very last sentence in that proposition language. This is written exactly as it would be on the ballot for November. And the very last statement is, this is a property tax increase, which is extremely confusing because you're thinking, okay, they just said tax increase, but there is no tax increase.
That's right.
Well, and there was discussion in Austin. It seemed like that the legislators were going to change that language and it's a shame that it's not because it is very confusing to the public.
That's an excellent point.
That's right. But to the point that we have already made, it is in fact going down regardless of this. So there we go. All right, that is A.
There's B, C and D.
Perfect.
So you can see the very last sentence, this is a property tax increase. There is no increase in your taxes. Are we taking on more debt? Yes, we are. But any district in this fast growth dynamic or this North Texas corridor, they have debt, just like we do.
That's correct. And then all of that equals out to 2.8.
On the language, we will kind of round those numbers up to make it a little bit cleaner.
Gotcha.
That's why you saw the 2.8 as a cleaner form.
Okay. Perfect then. We have a motion and a second discussion. Done that. Everybody in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, that is all seven of us, none opposed. All right, thank y'all very much. That brings us to the end of our meeting tonight. The time is now 8:18 PM and that concludes our meeting. Thank you, everybody, for joining us.